All right, I will call the meeting of the West Bend County Council May 18th, 6:30 to order. And I recognize that all seven aldermen are here in attendance. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item for Consideration. Number one, Discussion of Candidates Forfilling the District Four Alderperson Office. This is just open for discussion, and anyone can go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to first welcome or thank all four candidates who are in attendance now for their willingness to step up and apply for the position. And also, I would like to suggest Christopher Haas's compelling background in environmental area issues given would uniquely qualify him, given the issues we're going to be facing this year on the closure of the or the remediation of the closed landfill out near Villa Park. Villa Park, yeah.
That's it. Thank you.
Chris, or Mayor Dragan, I do have a question. Will this role go and be elected next year during the whatever, the even districts? Will they be appointed just for one year, or will they fulfill the whole term of two years?
So they're fulfilling the rest of my term, which would have been until April of 2021.
Twenty, okay. I was thinking it was a two-year.
Whoever's appointed would have the option to run it for reelection next spring.
Okay, so the person would run within another year.
Correct.
Thank you. I do want to also say, you know, thank you, Mark. I do think that that's a great statement about Villa Park, and obviously, Mr. Haas is very qualified with that. But we do have a great, we do have an independent contractor working with us right now. Doug Newman from Public Works is working on it. We're not short on Villa Park professional opinions or anything like that. I do think it would be, you know, great to have somebody that knows that background, but I don't think that that is something that necessarily we have to have in an aldermanic position, because we do have great consultants and people working with us on Villa Park already.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Going once, going twice. All right, so then we'll move on to item number two, Selection of Candidates to Fill the vacant office, District Four Alderperson. You should have slips of paper in front of you. Again, it's first to four votes, so if you could please fill out your votes. Don't forget to initial up at the top, and then hand them to Steph.
You already voted.
You know that's where we're gonna tally.
It's just a problem.
Sorry. Where's my hands? It really was.
All right, well, that was easier than we thought. We do have a majority. Mr. Kaler, come on up. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Happy to have you. I will get you sworn in right away.
Raise your hand. I, Randall Kaler.
I, Randall Kaler.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the office of.
To the office of.
District Four Alderperson.
District Four Alderperson.
But have not yet entered upon the duties.
But have not yet entered upon the duties.
Therefore swear.
Therefore swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Of said office.
Of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome to the city.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right, what's next?
I'll order Kaler, if you want to go back there. And of course, I want to say thank you to the rest of the candidates who were able to be in attendance tonight. Thank you for coming out. We'll definitely save your information, and I'm sure there'll be ways that we can use you in the future, so thank you. Feel free to stay if you'd like. And with that, I will recess the county council meeting. John, continue.
All right. I would like to call the Board of Public Works. We have four items on the agenda. First one will be approval of minutes of April 20th, 2020.
Motion approved.
Second. Okay, any discussion or changes? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carries.
Thank you.
Number two, we have permission to bid contract 20-12 Riverside Park Tennis Court and Basketball Court Resurfacing. Mike?
Good evening, everyone. Our department is requesting permission to advertise for contract 20-12, the Riverside Park Tennis Court and Basketball Court Resurfacing. This contract includes the installation of armor crack repair system on those courts, cleaning and inspection of the court surfaces, patching and leveling, application of a floor coat flexible acrylic colored system, striping with tennis and basketball lines, same type of system we used at Regner Park three or four summers ago. It's a great system. The estimated project cost is $50,000. $50,000 was designed designated for the project in the 2020 as part of the capital projects budget. Thank you.
Mike, I just have one question. On the cover letter, it was, I'm sure that's a typing error, but it was listed at Regner Park.
It is Riverside Park. Yes, it should be Riverside Park. Yep.
Okay. All right.
If I could make the motion to approve that with the amendments.
Okay, all right. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the amendments.
All right.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I have a quick question. I know Cedarburg, for example, their tennis courts, they share the cost with the city and the school and other people that use them. I'm wondering if our tennis courts at Riverside are used by the high school or private tennis clubs, will they also pitch in for some of the costs of these repairs?
Great question. For the most part, our courts are general use courts. We run some rec programs, things like that. The high schools do use them at times as overflow, but since the high school just recently redid their courts, there's not as much pressure to use our courts any longer. So, great question. It's a great suggestion, but at this point in time, the majority of the usage is just general use.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, there are no more questions. Do we have a more first and second? And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, keep motion, carry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Item number three, Award Contract 20-10, Tiff 14 River Road Utility Extension. Good evening, Max.
Good evening, thank you. This item is to consider a recommendation to award contract 2010 to extend some utilities in River Road. We received six bids on April 3rd, and they are summarized in the memo attached. You can see that we have a couple of bids that are really close to our pre-bid estimate at $497,500. So, the city has created a tax incremental district along River Road, and we've had Milwaukee Tools that is proposing a development there, and in order to serve this proposed development, we will need to extend utilities in River Road. And so that's the purpose of this contract, and we do have, the city is currently working on finalizing the developer's agreement, so we do have some items pending, and at this time, we would recommend the award based on or contingent on council approval to continue the process to close on the property with Milwaukee Tools. And then, at that point, the contract would be officially awarded, and we would be able to start construction. We have reviewed all the bids and the qualifications of Heartland Construction, the low bidder, and we find them capable of performing this work based on past work done in the city. Tiff 14 funds will be used to fund this project, and therefore, we recommend that the board and council award this contract to Heartland Construction in the amount listed in their bid for $489,955, as well as allocate a contingency fund of $27,099.45, which is about 5.5% of the total bid, for a total allocation not to exceed $517,000. If the board and council act positively, you have an award contract attached to be signed. Thank you.
Any questions? Yes, Steve.
Max, I don't know if you know this or if I got to ask Jay. Is there a time limit, how long we can hold this contract out? In other words, say Milwaukee Tool drags on, is there a time limit that we have to have this done?
Yes, we have, we have a timeframe for which the bids are valid. Usually, it's a 60-day from the opening, which was on April 3rd, so it would be June 2nd, would be the, the 60 days would be up. So technically, there is a council meeting, board and council meeting scheduled for June 1st, so technically, the award could be postponed up to that date. That's the answer to the question.
I'm not saying, I'm not looking to postpone that award. That's what I'm asking is, I mean, you've answered the question that if we approve it tonight, we've got basically June 2nd to implement it, right? To get it going?
I think I've been sure it came out.
Yep, so, we, yes, Steve, we've known about that date since Max went out for bid, and when Max first proposed bringing it to council for awarding, we were cautious. Ian and I, Mark, talked about when Milwaukee Tool would be ready to move forward on it. Everybody knows there's been a bit of a pause with the COVID, not only for Milwaukee Tool, but with most things commercial and industrial in West Bend and in lots of places in Wisconsin and elsewhere. They have known about the deadline as well, the June 2nd deadline, so we targeted this meeting and/or the June 1st meeting as an absolute deadline together to get this done. So the item that we're going to be going into closed session for in a few minutes will shed some more light on those positive discussions, and then there's two agenda items, again, at the close of council for the awarding of this proposal contract that Max has before you right now, and then also the open session action of the closed session Milwaukee Tool discussion.
Okay, my concern was that, that we missed the time limit, and all this, and they say, okay, that bid's out, now we're gonna rock another hundred grand onto it, so if that's the answer, I would make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Any discussions? Any more? Yes?
I have a question. Max, what are we looking at for a timeframe to complete, start and complete the work?
Once the, once the contract is awarded, there's the signature process, the contractor signed the contract, the city signs the contract, then we hold a pre-construction meeting. If it's awarded tonight, I would think that maybe work could start the second week of June. I know that the contractor is impatient to start, I will say. I've been on the phone with them. Due to the COVID-19, all the jobs that they had were canceled, because some of those jobs included going into proposed homes, you know, to relay laterals and things like that, so he has the crews available, he has the equipment available, so I would think that early June we could, we could start on this contract, and I don't remember the exact timeframe for completion, but I'm gonna guess by mid-August or late August, we should be completed with this.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we have motion on the floor. All those in favor, by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Item number four, Award Contract 20-11, Water Utility Pavement Repairs at Various Locations. Max, again?
Thank you again. This is another item where we would recommend awarding a contract. This is a contract that we've run for the past few years, basically to address pavement repairs after water utility repairs that happen. If we had water main breaks, sometimes lateral, the water utilities crew go in and fix those pipes, and then they would hire a contractor to come and patch the roads at those different locations. So, we have an established list that we put in the contract, that we have the contractor bid on it, and then they're supposed to target a timeframe in June to come and do all these repairs, and then at that point, they'll be given another list for the subsequent repairs, because as we go, we have more breaks and more repairs, and we'll work with them like this about every six weeks, where they would come back and fix a bunch of patches in order to maximize the return on investment with the asphalt patches and the concrete patches. So we received three bids that are summarized in the, in the memo, and the low bid, the low bidder is BMCI Construction. So BMCI has recently acquired TP Concrete, who was the successful bidder in the, all the past years for this contract, and they have done very good work. We're very satisfied with the work that they've done. So based on that, and talking with them, pretty much the crews from TP Concrete would be the ones that would be assigned from doing, to doing this work. So we would recommend awarding the contract to BMCI Construction at the prices specified in their bid for a total amount of $63,300, and also an allocation of a contingency fund of $9,500, which is 15% of the total bid, for a total allocation of $72,800. The 15% contingency that we're asking for, we ask for this every year, and I explain every year, it's the maximum that we are authorized by statute, and we ask for this because as we go, we don't know how many repairs we will have, and we want to maximize the amount of repairs we can do under this contract, and that's why we ask for the additional contingency. Just as a side note, I will say that the past three years, in 2017, 2018, and 2019, we have used all of the contingency that was given to the contract. We cannot predict when water main pipes will burst, so that's why we do it that way. So there is an award of contract attached for signature if the board and council act positively with this request.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any questions?
Yeah, on this one, do you have any feel for why we got two bids at roughly the same amount, and then one that's twice as much?
Usually, when we get this kind of spread in the bids, it's because that last contractor maybe has already a full schedule, or they are coming from a further away, and sometimes, that's my interpretation, so they feel like, well, I don't really need this job, but if I ever do have it, I'm gonna have the icing on the cake and the cherry on top, so.
Okay, good answer. Thanks. All right, just a note, what I did is I asked, sent an email to Travis from Water Department, because I know we had a mild winter, and I was aware that water main breaks were down this year compared to last year, and looking at my price, I asked him, well, okay, I know your water main breaks were down quite a bit from last year. It went from 28 the year before to 13 this year. And I says, you know, I thought maybe the bid would be a little less, but then he said they also included service, service curves that were taken out, and there were other things that were added to this list. So I understand why we are at that price, because there was other items besides just water main breaks that was involved.
Sure, thank you.
So it does make sense, then. All right. Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
John, one more thing?
Yep.
I'd like to recognize BMCI as a local contractor. It's a local company, so the connection here with the community is always good to see that they've come through and are able to do work for us. Just add that.
All right, thank you. All right, we have motion on the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, okay, motion carries. Being no further business before the Court of Public Courts, I adjourn.
All right, I'm gonna call, call to order the Finance Committee, starting with the approval of minutes from the meeting on April 20th. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor of approving the minutes from the Finance Committee on April 20th, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, in favor, the ayes have it. Moving on to the agenda items, first, we have the resolution to accept donations to the Park and Rec and Forestry Department, and Mike Yentz is here to give us an update on that.
Sounds good, thank you, Megan. This evening, we have several outstanding donations, again, from many different organizations and individuals throughout our fabulous community. First donation is a $50 donation by Laffey Mountain Gourmet Popcorn for sponsorship of the 2020 Movie Night in the Park. Second donation is $2,500 donated by Kohler Credit Union, again, for sponsorship of the 2020 Youth Softball, Youth Softball and T-Shirt League, Youth Softball Program and T-shirts for Summer League, and the July 4th, 2020 Sandcastle Event in Regner Park. Third donation is a $1,000 donation by First Bank Financial Center for sponsorship of the 2020 Movie Night in the Park. The next donation is $1,250 donated by JW Speaker for sponsorship of the 2020 Dirty Ninja Mud Run for Kids. The next donation is a $500 donation by Whitetails Unlimited of Washington County. This is for Archery and Range Maintenance out on Municipal Drive. The next donation is $1,250 donated by Meyer for sponsorship of the 2020 Dirty Ninja Mud Run for Kids. A bike rec has been sponsored, valued at $200, by the Historic Barton Business Association. We have an outstanding donation by the Regner Rejuvenation Committee for $19,536.40. That would go towards the new Fishing Pond Shelter in Regner Park. The next donation is $20,000 donated by the West Bend Early Risers Kiwanis for the Regner Park Fishing Shelter in, in the park. And the last, and certainly not least, donation would be a $50,000 anonymous donation for the library rec center in the basement of the library. So again, huge thank you and shout out to all the individuals and organizations. Without these donations, West Bend would certainly be a duller community, so thank you to all of them.
Yes, thank you to all of our donors, and it's great to see them come through for West Bend. Do I have a motion to approve the donation exception?
I have a good question real quick. So, like, the Ninja Mud Run donations, is that gonna get forwarded on to next year?
Great question. Dirty Ninja Mud Run was mentioned tonight, Movie in the Park, Sandcastle, all those things. I know the discussion's coming up yet this evening, but we have talked to most of our sponsors, if they're sponsoring an event or something this year, if they would like to just carry that sponsorship into 2021, and a majority of them had said yes, they would like to continue their sponsorship into next year, so, but we might, okay, I'll save that. So, yeah, no, everyone's been very understanding, I mean, everyone's in kind of the same situation, so, but they're, everyone's still very excited about sponsoring some of these events and things like that, and if it's not gonna be 2021, or 2020, hopefully it'll be 2021, so.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve, and second, do we have any discussion on this? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Second, or third agenda item is gonna be the resolution authorizing transfer of park funds for Regner Shelter construction, and I believe, Mike?
Sounds good, thank you. Our department is requesting approval to transfer $15,000 from the PARC account, which is a park recreation capital account. A lot of the funds that are in are donations, funds from special events and things like that. Those monies are set aside exactly for projects like this, so this $15,000 will go towards the construction of the new Fishing Pond Shelter in Regner Park. As was mentioned earlier, we also have two outstanding donations, one from the Regner Rejuvenation Group, and one from the Early Risers Kiwanis, to also help support the construction of this shelter. This transfer of funds will support the financial needs, and the estimated project cost is around $67,000, and we can happily say we are gonna start construction of that very soon now with some of the new, the old restrictions lifted, things like that, so we can get started on that project here really very quick, so thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then the last item on the agenda is the resolution authorizing the transfer of the recreation fund balance for library and rec center project.
Thank you. Our department is requesting approval to transfer $150,000 from the recreation fund balance to the capital projects fund for the library recreation center construction project. Along with generous donations from various community partners, the recreation fund balance, the West Bend Memorial Library Building Funds, and library fund balance accounts will be used towards the expenses for Phase One construction, which will include a lobby, dance studio, multipurpose room, and restrooms. These restrooms will be used, or these rooms will be used by both the rec division and the library for programming. At the end of 2019, we had $251,000 in this account. Again, we refer to this recreation account as like an enterprise account, so when we have different recreation programs and things like that, the Dirty Ninja Mud Run, those funds go towards this account, pay expenses to run the beach operations and things of that nature. The fund has been doing very well, obviously, over the last several years, that we were fortunate enough that we could look at transferring $150,000 this evening to help support that build out in the library. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Any discussion? I just, one quick question, Mike, the, the funds that you guys are transferring, the library matches those, right? It's kind of a joint?
That, it is a joint effort. The specific dollar amount from the library is a little bit up in the air yet. I believe they're gonna be discussing that here at their next board meeting, so I don't wanna say anything or make any, before their discussion.
Okay.
But yes, Dave will be providing some funding for that, yes.
Allow.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Motion to, or, I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion approved, and then being?
Thank you.
Being no further business, I adjourn the Finance Committee meeting.
All right, thank you, Megan. I will call again the county council meeting. We're on approval of the minutes, item number four. If I could have a motion?
Hold on.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Wonderful. And then I will need a motion to consent the agenda, which consists of items five through nine.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
fortunate enough that we could look at transferring $150,000 this evening to help support that build out in the library. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? I just, one quick question, Mike, the funds that you guys are transferring, the library matches those, right? It's kind of a joint?
That, it is a joint effort. The specific dollar amount from the library is a little bit up in the air yet. I believe they're gonna be discussing that here at their next board meeting, so I don't wanna say anything or make any, before their discussion.
Okay.
But yes, they will be providing some funding for that. Yes.
Allow.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Motion to, or, I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion approved.
Thank you.
Being no further business, I adjourn the Finance Committee meeting.
All right. Thank you, Megan. I will call again the county council meeting. We're on approval of the minutes, item number four. If I could have a motion?
Hold on.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Wonderful. And then I will need a motion to consent the agenda, which consists of items five through nine.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Wonderful. Next up is item number 10, a public hearing. A public hearing regarding the Scrap Dills License for American Metal and Paper Recycling Inc., American Metal and Paper Recycling Inc., 935 Shane Howard Drive. Is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak on this item?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second, any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Wonderful. We're on agenda items for consideration, item number 11, resolution to adopt the Washington-Ozaki County Public Health Department Blueprint for reopening Washington and Ozaki Counties. I'll start this conversation off with Administrator Shambello and go from there.
Sounds great. So the blueprints received lots of press recently. I would be shocked if you have not been made aware of it, and it's many versions, so it's on version 14 or so, and the health department, so even before the safer-at-home order was ruled by the Supreme Court last Wednesday to be no longer valid and enforceable in Washington County, the entire state, we had been saying, we as staff, and Mayor Jenkins and Chief Boyler, Ian, Mike, folks that we've been meeting with and talking about how to go about this safer-at-home process, that the city, because some municipalities had drafted plans for their own municipality, and the city of West Bend does not have a health officer, so it would not have been appropriate for us to draft a health plan following an officer that's not in place. Ian's not a health officer, I'm certainly not. Chief Boyler's probably the closest thing that we have to that, because he's good at all things. And I mean that sincerely. It's really been the point of a lot of questions and concerns regarding COVID over the last couple of months, so we thank Chief Boyler for stepping up and answering lots of questions for our constituents and our businesses. But all along that intermediate time, when we were expecting the Supreme Court to rule, we had been pointing to the county's plan, the blueprint, and the frequently asked questions has kind of overridden the blueprint as far as having more detail. We were pointing to that, saying that, you know, we're not gonna create our own plan, we have the county's plan in place, and then just like that, the state Supreme Court ruled, and the county plan was sort of the only thing out there, but not really, because it's not adopted and enforceable by law. So again, Mayor Jenkins, Ian, Chief Boyler, Mike Yench, from a, from an events standpoint, and what we're gonna do with our park and rec programs, met many times after that ruling took place, and brought forth, first, the press release that went on Thursday late afternoon, so you hopefully had a chance to read that, saying that the city is going to look to the plan, encourage our residents to do the same, and our businesses to do the same, and city staff and programs to follow the county blueprint. The county has encouraged that all municipalities in Washington County do so, and they've made the commitment to follow the plan themselves. So it's with that level of background, and Chief Boyler and Mike can talk more about more of the specifics of the detail within the plan and the impact that it has on our programs. Not only our programs, but maybe I'll say a couple of words about the special permits, events that we issued through the clerk's office with conjunction of the PD reviewing, anything that is under the review or issuance of a permit from our city organization, we're asking that this action that you're gonna be taking tonight will be guidance for those kind of events as well. And I'll say, for example, the Music on Main, farmers markets, some of the other festivals and special events that take place within the city. So I'll answer any questions that you might have, otherwise I defer to the other three individuals that have been very involved, and Mayor Jenkins might have some comments as well.
I assume that if our situation changes relative to the rest of the county, we can always adopt changes to this. We don't have, this isn't like legally binding or anything, right?
So the intent of this is to provide guidance to staff. So when we're considering, you know, like Jay said, the Music on Main event permit, we have, we have something to hang our hat on in order to provide feedback on the permit application. The county is constantly updating their health plan, so this isn't some rigid plan that was put in place in the middle of April and has stayed the same, they're constantly updating it. And yes, we could, if suddenly there's, you know, an outbreak of cases across West Bend, we can certainly adapt and, I mean, move to suspend all permits, or suspend all special events, or anything like that, if it would be necessary. We would follow the guidance of the health officer with that, because like Jay said, we don't have health officers within the city. We need somebody with a public health background to provide us the guidance, to know what's best to do, otherwise it's just kind of pure speculation.
Is that unusual, that we don't have a health officer?
No. Most municipalities do not. You get like Milwaukee and Madison that have them, Green Bay might have one, but it's almost always the county, with the weird exception of Watertown, which actually has theirs, and staffs for the counties in the area too, so.
I do have a quick question. So this, I mean, the guidance, I know that there's a lot of different areas, religious and all, hairstyling, whatever. The point of this would not be to have our police chief enforcing any of these 25% capacity people wearing masks. That's not what this is. This is just to give the city staff guidance on the best practices?
Correct. So the county guidance is not binding. There's, the vast majority of the counties, there were some guidance from the Counties Association about what the authority was, and you saw people adopting and then revoking their safer-at-home orders at the county level. This is not binding, this is guidance. What this resolution does is say, city staff, when we are opening the library, when we are having park and recs events that are city-run, follow this guidance. And when we have things that are within our discretion, like permits, you know, picnic beer licenses, that stuff, follow this guidance in determining whether to grant the permit and what conditions to grant it under. So that is the intent, not to go out and say, justice, you can't, you can't be open because you're not at 25% capacity, that's not within our specific purview. Also, it doesn't affect any of the bars, because those are not the temporary permits we're discussing, so.
You said the county one was changing almost daily. Will this then change daily? Will we continue to follow their guidelines, or is?
Yes, we would continue to follow their guidelines.
So this will be an evolving document?
Yeah, we don't have to, we don't have to update this, we would follow the guidelines, you know, produce by the county.
We'll just continue to follow whatever their standards are. Okay.
You just mentioned bars. Do we have concerns in this municipality about bars? And what's going on?
I, I mean, I think it's the same concerns as our statewide, my people, I mean, I don't know if it's any different than anywhere else in the state or the country, honestly.
So to clarify, the outside of city operations, everything is voluntary?
Correct.
Restaurant can theoretically do whatever it wants, however, may feel social pressure to separate.
Correct.
But that's not being touched. That's all that I asked.
I have one other question in here, like, some of this seems a little hard to gauge, so for example, firework events, so if we do 4th of July fireworks, it says, whether indoor or outdoor, we're limited to 25% capacity, and that observers must be socially distanced and must wear face masks. So if the city of West Bend maybe hosts fireworks this year, how are we gonna determine 25% capacity at a park? And how are we gonna try to enforce face masks for people with police? Again?
Yeah. And this, the outdoor gathering, go ahead, Mike, the outdoor gathering at 25%, depending on the venue, is very complicated.
Yeah.
Mike's probably gonna say he's in the process of trying to figure out what Regner Beach, if we're to open Regner Beach, what is the capacity of that? So, so all those, those are not clear?
Yeah, that's why I'm concerned with saying, like, this isn't great. Voting yes or no?
Some of this has yet to be determined.
Yeah.
Right, and some of the guidance changes. So just a couple of days ago, a lot of the guidance had 50 people as a max, or 25 or 50%, depending on the venue. Now those 50 people number, that parameter is out, and it just says 25 or 50%.
Ultimately, our traditional special events, Dirty Ninja Mud Run, July 4th celebrations, July 4th parade, Beer Garden, German Night, all those events would not occur during the summer, under this guidance. Okay? Again, this is a living, breathing document, things are changing. If COVID cases go up, the restrictions get tighter, COVID cases go down, restrictions probably ease a little bit. I can tell you, there would be no athletic tournaments whatsoever on city facilities this summer. No softball, no leagues, yes, tournaments, no. Because the tournaments are gonna bring people in from the outside world. What the, and I certainly am not the health officer here by any means, but really what they're looking at is like on a July 4th, you wanna have a party in your backyard with some friends, some neighbors, things like that, you have 20, 30 people over, it's up to you, your choice, their choice, if they want to attend that party. At some point in time, let's hope this doesn't happen, one of the guests becomes sick with COVID, they can now trace that, they can track that, they know who was there. Someone goes to Riverside Park, we have 7,000 people there for July 4th, that would be impossible to track that, who'd they come in contact with, et cetera, et cetera. So our special events, the traditional ones that we all enjoy, we, makes West Bend, West Bend, we would not have those this summer, under this guidance.
What about things like the, like you said, rec, like T-ball leagues, Little League baseball?
Okay, so I'll stick with, I'll go with sporting, with athletics, okay? Right now, they're looking at, all contact sports are canceled for the summer. Contact sports would be football, wrestling, soccer, things of that nature. Now, does that mean, and basketball, does that mean we can't play basketball in West Bend this summer? No. Our basketball court in Regner Park was, the fence came down today, it's open for play. Those facilities will be open for general use, but not for leagues, not for organizations, things like that. Some kids wanna go take their basketball over to Ziegler Park, go for it, great. The non-contact sports, or low-contact sports, I should say, I'll use their terminology, low-contact sports, baseball, softball, things like that, we can run, we can operate those. West Bend Little League can function this summer, okay? They can have their leagues and things like that, there's information in there about social distancing, cleaning equipment, they strongly suggest not to share equipment, bats, balls, things like that, but they understand that baseball can't be really sanitized and all that, and there's some risk involved. Okay, well, that comes obviously with parents and things like that. So leagues can run, again, there's social distancing guidelines and capacity guidelines and all that, but the tournaments, they don't want the tournaments that we host. The West Bend Little League Tournament, Father's Day Tournament is phenomenal every year, it fills every ball diamond in West Bend, they got people coming from four different states, they don't want people from four different states coming to West Bend. They don't, not this summer. They don't, that's just the reality. They wanna hold some inner-squad tournament amongst their teams or something like that, great, go for it. But just those tournaments, we can't host those tournaments this summer. I can tell you, for our general rec leagues, in June, we are looking at starting, we have some virtual programs, we have an outstanding community cable division here, our rec staff has been working with them, we have some virtual recreation programs coming up. I don't know if you've all seen it, I hope everyone gets signed up for the virtual 5K, 10K that we just sent out late last week, that, you know, it's, things like that. Our summer's not over, there's lots of things we can do. We've been through this quarantine the last two months, our parks are crazy busy with people hiking and enjoying what they have in their backyard. And this week, we're getting, we're getting all of our athletic surfaces ready, tennis is ready already, pickleball's been open, disc golf's been open, soccer nets are gonna go, volleyball nets, basketball courts unlocked. Our target date is May 29th, we're gonna have all the restrooms open by then. May 29th, we're gonna have all of our rental facilities again operational. Our rental facilities, if you want to, at Riverside Park, the capacity numbers for inside the building will be changed because we're following these guidelines. Is it closed? No. I talked to a bride today, her wedding's August 1st, and she's so excited to, she can have a wedding at 90 people, she's pumped. She told me on the phone, if she could, she'd give me a hug. I said, well, I can't, we gotta social distance, so, and I figured her fiance wouldn't be real happy about it, so. So is our summer canceled? No, it's not, you know? There's plenty of fun things we can still do, plenty of activities, I mean, we've got a great river running right through our community, get those kayaks out and all that. Athletic leagues, softball, baseball, we're gonna run them, as long as these guidelines provide us that ability, we're gonna run them. It's just the tournaments we can't have, the really cool special events. Dirty Ninja Mud Run is a huge event for our department and our rec division. I mentioned earlier, tonight, we have $251,000 in our rec account. That's because of the Dirty Ninja Mud Run, it's a really successful program, okay? Our rec division's gonna take a hit of about $20,000, $25,000 this year, okay? Because we just, we're not gonna have programs. Regner Swim Pond, will we have that open this summer? Most likely not, because you take a summer like last year, last year's average summer, we lost $5,600 last year in revenue, keeping that thing operational. It does not make us money at all. So if we look at the guidelines set in this document, our capacity numbers are gonna be way down, but we still have to train lifeguards, we still have to put them up on the chairs, we have to rotate them through, we still have all those operational things. Through that, rec division, also water treatments for the pond, maintenance, cleaning, et cetera, et cetera. So if we follow this guideline, today, I would say we probably will not have any swimming. The splash pad, we'll get that open, probably sometime in mid, early June, that would be available. And again, there's a capacity number there, I'm not gonna stand on there and count how many kids are on the splash pad every day and all that, I'm not, we're not gonna do that. We're gonna put signs around the playgrounds, which are opening this week, we're gonna put signs up around the splash pad, things like that, letting people know, hey, wash your hands, social distance, things like that, just good professional reminders. And again, those reminders are coming out of here. So they have some general guidance for just signage literally around playgrounds in here, things like that. So again, this document, is it gonna fluctuate at times? Yep, you bet. But hopefully, it relaxes a little bit as our summer goes, because hopefully, the numbers go down. I mean, I think that's what everyone wants. So, that's kind of the direction, I'm just looking at my notes here, kind of the direction we're moving here. Traditional July 4th, is it canceled? Yeah, the traditional aspect of it is it. We're still working with the police department, we're communicating with other municipalities in Washington County, maybe we can still have fireworks. It's not gonna be the same, it's not gonna be the same, 5,000 people in Riverside Park, that's out, we can't do that, according to these guidelines. Sorry about all the not-so-exciting news, but that's the reality we're in right now.
Thanks, Mike. Yeah. So liability has come up as part of this conversation as well. Michelle and I reached out to our agent, Ann John Dirksey, the Director of Client Services, just today, wrote back a "we got your back" kind of email, saying, you know, follow the local health officials, and then our salesperson of our policy, Tony Matera, shared a bullet, two-sentence bullet, the bullet version of our guidance is, follow the Ozaki Washington County Health Department recommendations, and then the CIC, the name of the group, the liability policy has your back. That was encouraging news, there was some, you know, the library has asked above that as well, the library board is gonna be addressing this tomorrow, I shared this with Amy, just sitting here, that for her meeting tomorrow night, she'll be able to share that information as well with the library, because there was some concern on some board members' parts, my understanding, that if somebody were to get the disease at the library and was traced back there, would there be some extra liability? I mean, the answer is, you're following the guidance, we got your back. And there's no blueprint for this, there's no playbook that says absolutely, but at least that's.
That's why there's such a debate about it. The other thing I'll add is, this does include, I would say it also includes employment practices, so it gives clear guidance about what we're expecting to do as a city from the governing body, and so that gives us something to work off as we deal through, work through situations where people may not be comfortable with reopening the library or something like that, and how to address those things as well. And that's, that's still something that's evolving as well, I have two possible webinars I could do tomorrow on some of those aspects, so. It's all, it's all in flux, and there's a lot of interesting things, especially now that there's not mandatory, you know, work from home if you can type of a setup, so, I mean, but it's important from that aspect as well, to have the guidance that the city shall follow these guidelines for our, as a, as an organization, so.
Great, thank you.
Motion approved.
Motion approved.
Second.
Hold on now, do you have a comment?
I have a question. Is there, can somebody explain to me why we chose to move from a virtual meeting to an in-person? to an in-person meeting prior to adopting these, this resolution? What was the burning desire to meet in person?
There was a desire among some of your colleagues to meet face-to-face, at least for the interviewing portion. I know that was part of it. The Supreme Court's decision kind of gave us free rein as well. I'd say those are the two main reasons.
Yeah, if you want me to jump in, we, we discussed it, Mary Jenkins and I discussed the possibility of going in person. And although the blueprint has not been adopted by you yet, we set up the room and socially distanced everyone as, as though we were following the blueprint.
Yeah, but the guidelines from the Center for Disease Control talk about socially distancing and wearing face masks. They don't talk about, well, if you don't want to wear a face mask, just socially distance. You know, so are we just giving this like, oh, here's a document, we're going to take it? I mean, if this is the guidelines we're going to use, then, then where are the face masks for all the conversations that happened at, at less than arm's length?
Is that in the document that we all would have to wear face masks in here? I didn't see that in there.
Neither.
Okay.
I, I found it, it's in, it's in the CDC guidance.
Right, but it's not his blueprint.
Well, yeah, but they say, well, these are, these are the things, and then use the CDC guidance. But if nobody's looking at what that guidance is. You know, there are, there are individuals that are in risk groups. So.
Well, I guess, are you, are you saying that from, that in the future, we should all wear masks?
Inside, yes, highly recommended.
That is not part of the blueprint, though, correct?
Well, no, because the blueprints, the blueprints, go look at the CDC guidance. But nobody's looking at the CDC guidance, they're looking at the blueprint and saying, you know, come out to the Collins Deck bar and...
That, that's my question, is there anything about masks in the blueprint?
Where we would have to ask the city employees to wear masks while they're at work? That would be a question.
So there's a...
It, it is in the introduction. They do make reference. It's a CDC advises the use of a simple cloth face mask covering as an additional voluntary public health measure instructions. And it goes on and talks about how they can be made and stuff. The majority of the time when they talk about a face mask, they talk about when you cannot publicly distance. So that is in the guidelines. And in fact, I just was in a conversation today with Kirsten Johnson, who's the administrator, and that is her guidance. So if you're at work, if I'm in my office by myself, not have a mask on, if you have to deal with the public or whatever, then you would wear the mask.
Voluntarily?
So the guidance on, on libraries and municipal buildings, page 27 of 43, under the latest version 13, and, and I think this language has stayed the same, because we've been encouraging our employees to do exactly what Chief just said, practice physical distancing and disinfection protocol. Staff and patrons should wear cloth face masks in settings where physical distancing is difficult. So that's the, the stance that the city has been operating under for a long time. That's how this rule was set up, that if you cannot maintain physical distancing, then yes, the recommendation is to wear a mask. You can always wear one, it's, and we've, we've provided them for our employees. They have the opportunity to wear masks if they're not comfortable, or if they're in a position, most of our employees, where their work setting is, is six feet plus apart.
I don't feel quite as strongly about it as Mark does, because I don't have some of those underlying conditions. But I, I do not see the harm in modeling good behavior also, or extra cautious behavior. It's just a thought.
I don't like wearing a mask, but I, there should be a reason for it. And when we are at these distances, I don't know what wearing a mask achieves. Agreed, will it make you feel good?
Well, I do have...
Yeah, but you still have the choice to wear one.
Absolutely, anyone can wear a mask today, right?
I do have the underlying conditions, I have at least two or three of them. And I will be very honest with you, and the job that I do is transporting people from point A to point B. And I think in the two months I've done it, because I'm not required, I have worn a mask maybe two or three times. And I think it comes down to where it says it's voluntary. If you want to wear a mask, God bless you, go ahead and do it.
Is it being, this, because you do work for the city taxi car?
I work for the county taxi.
Or the county, but do they provide it to you if you would like one?
Yes, they do.
Okay, so you could choose or not choose.
I find everything I need, and it's up to me whether I want to use it or not. They're not saying I have to, it's up to me.
Yep, absolutely.
And that's what this is too, it says it's voluntary, so that's what I would kind of go with.
Yeah, the information that's out there is so foggy. It's just hard to tell what the right thing to do is.
Exactly, exactly, it changes by the hour.
If you feel it's right for you, I mean, if you feel it's right. Have it?
It changes by the hour, there's no way you can set something in stone.
So, on that, I am still looking for a motion to adopt the resolution.
We have a motion by...
Oh, I'm sorry.
...purpose and...
Okay.
By judge, the volunteer.
Is there any other discussion? And seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
And any oppose?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Moving on to agenda item number 12, granting a scrap dealer's license for American Metal and Paper Recycling, Inc., 935 Sheinhart Drive.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you. Is there a motion second and discussion?
Chris, has there been any complaints? I'm not familiar with, I don't know where they are, have we had any complaints or anything that were... Or just saying, hey, we got to look at this one?
No, we have not had any complaints.
This is a certain one.
And all's in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Wonderful. On to item number 13, request to approve We Energies easement. Max, for you to start this one?
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you. This item came to us because We Energies is upgrading some of their facilities located north of Decora Road, along the river there, going up to Municipal Drive by the sewer treatment plant. And they're going through land that is controlled by the sewer utility. They already have an easement with some facilities there. They need more room, additional five feet. In some areas, a little more, maybe eight feet. Throughout, throughout that property. And so they drafted easement documents, which we reviewed, staff reviewed, the city attorney reviewed. It's attached to your memo. And basically, we would recommend that the council approves this easement to allow We Energies to have the additional room so they can upgrade their facilities in the area.
Great.
Motion approved.
Any discussion or questions for Max? Seeing none, all's in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Wonderful. And on to item number 14, entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session pursuant to State Statute, Section 19.85, Pair 1, Ver. E. Deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting of a specified public business, whatever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, purchase and developers agree.
So moved.
Thank you. Discussion, otherwise I'll call for a roll call.
Alderman Bushwick?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Burka?
Aye.
Alderman Kaler?
Aye.
Alderman Dolnick?
Aye.
Alderman Hoopister?
Aye.
Alderman Mottl?
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy?
Aye.
We are in closed session.
We are in closed session, we're going to stay in here, we're going to ask...
Login and stuff when you stop it. You have your own login. Tomorrow, I'm here till 4:30. Will that work?
Yeah.
All right, we're going to reconvene in open session and take up item number 15, a resolution approving developer's agreement and option to purchase and restrictive covenants slash city maintenance agreement for land sale to Milwaukee Tool.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all his favor, so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Wonderful. And thank you, of course, to Milwaukee Tool for coming into the great city of West Penn. Then on to item number 16, Ward Contract 20-10 to 14, River Road Utility Extension.
Motion to approve.
Is there any discussion or any other questions? Seeing none, all his favor, so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Wonderful. And we'll move on to reports. I'll just take these both in tandem, so both 17 and 18, a report by Alderman Mottl regarding the Community TV Committee meeting and a report by him as well on the downtown bid board. Go ahead.
They kind of tie it together, too. The Community TV Committee meeting went really well. I mean, it was kind of awkward here on Zoom or whatever the service was we're using, I'm not sure, but we did get a new member of the committee, Kyle Zwieg. Welcome to Kyle. John Elke gave us an update on the Castas Build Out project, which is just some new technology we got going back there. He also reported the video on demand viewership is up during the pandemic. A bunch of the social media stuff was up, as you can imagine, for obvious reasons. Jess Wild, Director Jess Wild, reported on the social media tracking and the views for Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, and LinkedIn, of course, like I said, all up. The top post was on the Milwaukee Tool story, as far as engagement goes. That's about it. The Committee TV organizational chart was reviewed and we're still talking about changing the name and all that, but that was pretty productive. Went well. And also Jess had put together a program that Community TV is going to do with the bid, that moves beyond the bid board report. We do have a new member on the bid, that's Tony Cobal. Welcome to Tony. And the program I'm talking about, the tiered program, that's kind of designed to be fluid and flexible as things change. I don't know if anybody wants to know more about it. Jess can explain it, but it was, it's kind of a big deal and I think it's going to be very helpful to downtown and the city. That's it.
Wonderful. Any questions for Alderman Mottl? And seeing none, are there any announcements for the good order?
Just to thank you. Thank you all for selecting me to fill this seat.
Welcome.
Looking forward to working with you all.
Wonderful. Then I will adjourn. About to call the chair.
Jess.